Meeting law and section eighteen and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the board of selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No interest in attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting law in progress may do so by watching local cable on channel nine or through the website application Zoom. To start the meeting off with a pledge of allegiance, Chief Pukak, if you need us, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Seeing that all members are present, do we have any public comments at the present time? Shannon, with your microphone. Thank you very much. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of November twenty fourth, twenty twenty workshop. Motion with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of June twenty ninth, twenty twenty one workshop chest.
We're moved.
Second. Motion with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of July eighth, twenty twenty one regular set.
So moved.
Second. Motion with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Town administrator, COVID nineteen update.
Chairman, I don't have much of an update, but I know that Kathleen and Steve Spur here, they had anything to add. I thought, I just saw Steve Spur wave his head no. I think, I don't think they're necessarily prepared for that portion of the meeting, but I'll say in terms of town opening, you know, we've talked about meetings. And right now where we are, the hybrid for most of the meetings, one of the things we might want to discuss in any team with the board is if we would allow the public to come back with the in the meetings while looking at making sure we keep as many hybrid options as possible, working with committees to make sure they have the technology. We have gotten really good feedback from a lot of the committees because it does allow members to be remote, but it also allows consultants allows a lot of greater flexibility on scheduling these meetings. So would like to maybe keep the hybrid in work. We do have this setup that we're going to work on as well as the setup for the West Wing office and we can work with other departments like COA on how they can set up because they have a television there that they can do their meetings. Park and Rec, same thing. So the request to look to allow the public back in terms of being able to be in the meetings, working with committees to set up the options of them.
Who's going to be the liaison? You're going to be the liaison?
I'll work with the committees.
Yeah, okay.
It's zero cases for the last two weeks from July fourth to July seventeen. There is one possible positive case on the rise of fifteen today. And then there's sixty-six percent of Avon residents have their first vaccine and fifty-nine percent are fully vaccinated, so slowly going up.
Do you see the fully vaccinated percentage increasing? I know that, you know, certainly politically, there's a lot of pressure to continue pushing, especially with the younger generation, that we will be successful also?
It's fine up a little, it's really slow, but I'm gonna say it's moving like eighty-one percent.
Can we, go ahead, sir.
One thing that skewed those numbers a little bit, when the twelve-year-olds became eligible, that whole population then came in counting. So we gained a lot more people that had day one eligibility and went against our percentage a little bit. Same thing will happen when we go well.
Should we, the town may want to have a million dollars ground like the state federal government test?
I think so. I got vaccinated here.
Okay.
You're not a resident, you're not eligible to, sorry. Mr. Chairman, if I may make a comment about reopening, I guess my question would be, could we do something where, yes, we can open up to the public to come to meetings, but on an RSVP? Way where we ask people if they're planning on being here, can they let us know so we can plan?
I don't know if you can do some of that just because if they don't and you say that you can't come in because of that, then you're stuck. If you're adding administrative burden to some of those departments, you don't have the staff to do that.
You've got plenty of time, right?
I'm sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, of course, the COA, the COA liaison can take care of all that.
Yep.
Who is it?
Pretty good. All right. Any other comments about COVID nineteen updates? All right, any change orders from the design selection from the board? Be okay with working to open up with those.
I'm okay with that. Public community units, I don't think we're going to need that much. We never have before, so I don't think overcrowding issues won't be an issue. Because the handful of like videos, don't see that be a huge issue.
Very emotional.
Just a, I mean, it's really just a.
Come on, what are comments out?
No, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Change order that designer selection done. Appointment of election workers for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Do you have the lists? The extension. Clerk will read it.
Slaveman from Patricia, the South Town Clerk, dated July sixth, twenty twenty-one, in regards to election workers fiscal year twenty-two. As per Mass General Law, Chapter Fifty-four, Section Twelve, the selecting of every town shall appoint election workers not earlier than July fifteenth nor later than August fifteenth. I recommend appointing fallen residents to be part of election workers fiscal year twenty-two. Reappointments. Gene Kofke, forty-eight Page Street, Warden. Joey Brenham, eighty-six Pond Street, Deputy Warden Checker. Carol Geary, three twenty-five East Main Street Checker. Julia Fasano, sixteen Freeman Street Checker. Margaret Ruby, twenty Fletcher Street Checker. Patricia Olson, one eighty-four East Spring Street Checker. Karen Johnson, ninety-three West Spring Street Checker. Kristen McGuire, twenty Robin Street Checker. Jennifer Mayo, forty-four Robin Street Checker. Elaine Dubrowski, seventy-two Pratt Street Checker. Lynn McCanny, seven Gil Street Checker. Elaine Flanagan, eighty-six West Spring Street Checker. Maria Picarilli, sixty-six School Street Checker. Linda Carroll, one Carroll Court Checker. Shannon Pharoah, forty-four Maliau, Officer Relief and Count. New appointments. Michael Sandy, three forty Central Street Checker. And Brooke Von Aaron Crook, seventy-nine East High Street, as checked.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve as read.
Make the motion.
Motion with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have a gift acceptance for the Park and Rec. This is from an anonymous donor for twenty-five dollars from the Avon Post of Pizza gift card. It's to be used for the Park and Rec summer program. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, sorry, proposed. We have an application in front of us for a park permit. Town administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I do believe the applicants are on the line. This is the same permit that looked me, they haven't started the program yet, you know, looking to extend it, and I believe they were sending video of their entrances. So we were making sure they had that, you know, this is to go, I'll see, do the yoga and the food truck on Saturday.
Any changes from what was discussed previously?
I don't believe so. I think it's just extending every Saturday number six and they're looking to, every other Saturday, I'm sorry. From July twenty-fourth to November fifteenth, I think we might not want to extend that far out. All because of weather and, yeah, programs, I think, going around that time.
And we did try to make sure that there were no conflicts with other.
Other programs.
Other programs.
Yep. And all the entrances and all.
I believe.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. This is Sharon Satharo. I just wanted to confirm and just let you know, right now, we're only asking to extend use of the park for the food truck for every other Saturday. I've had to take a step back from teaching the yoga as it is before we could even really get it started. We've had a few minor setbacks, so that's why we haven't really been able to begin use in the park. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. It's really only our request to use it for the food truck at this time.
Okay, yep. That's a clarification.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
So where do we go? Do we have to change it? Are we gonna change it? Go to October? Because there are already dates already in October for the commercial part.
The only thing we have is really October five, so we could make sure that that's the end date, but any town program events push out the permit or the availability of the park, we can give them a list of dates.
That's about the only thing that would be on a Saturday.
That I know. I'm about eighty-five, ninety percent sure.
Now, I believe we're talking about any, any known or future town function that would conflict, they would have to check with you.
Yep, well. This one might be, the office will be.
Do you know when October fest is?
What do you think is the first week, is it?
If it's the second, it would fall within this timeframe. If it's the ninth, it would not. Well, based on every two weeks from this time on Saturday, so. As long as the notice to, oh, amend the motion, motion to approve the dates requested pending confirmation of any town run functions that might conflict.
Second. Motion with a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Town administrator, appointment of a prevention coordinator, I think. Kathy, you want to speak on this?
I don't think she might.
I hope she is now.
I mean, I think, just so you know, we, and then get her to already, because we advertise and, and moving a manual.
Is it?
Is it all, is it all to appointment for the prevention coordinator?
Is she online? She should have been trying to get on.
She, if she is, the manual, are you there?
I don't.
She was gonna maybe try to get on.
Yeah.
Can we clarify the salary? Because is that like per day, per hour, per year?
Per year, yes.
Oh, it doesn't say. I appreciate.
And is this already in line? It's already budgeted amount, right?
Yep.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion to approve with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I approve. We have line item transfer. Is Erin online?
I believe I did see her.
Yep, I'm here.
Good evening, Erin.
Evening.
Would you like to explain the line item transfer in front of us? We have a line item transfer, a year-end line item transfer, the amount of eight thousand dollars to go to library personnel services. Coming out of library personnel services is going to library books publications. Would you explain?
Sure. So they need the transfer because they need to spend their budget down almost to zero or as close to zero as they can to maintain their OCLN membership, as far as I understand. And there was, so the director left and the assistant director was filling in, but he wasn't aware of all of the items that were ordered. So he thought he was spending the budget down properly, but then he found out about back orders and differences in prices that changed that at the last minute. So that is why they need the transfer now, kind of a result of staffing changes and just needing to spend the budget down as, as close to zero as they can and not knowing about the back orders.
Thank you. Any questions coming for the board? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion to approve with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Mr. Chairman, one additional to this, I have not read the finance committee, but I have another line and transfer, it's gonna have to be sure as well. I can tell them, I asked them to schedule a meeting as soon as possible. We're hoping to give a meeting next year forward.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate that. The chair has the privilege of announcing the August meeting as August twelfth. Time?
Six thirty?
Six thirty? August twelfth, six thirty. That would be for our August meeting, which will be on a separate schedule at that point. Town administrators report.
I could go ahead. What, do you want to go to the other part?
No, let's do you.
All right.
I mean, we, we want to make sure we don't.
Sure, I don't want to rush the afterthought.
Right, I know.
I got it. Architect assessment, about a week ago, I met with the architects here for a couple hours to go through the building. They sent out surveys to department heads to get their input on needs of their office space and they're setting up a meeting. Talked to them on the twenty-ninth, so we're moving that process along, get a sense of what's going on as part of that assessment. The EPC job cleaning is finally done, no, the whole process, but it was the first time in thirty years it probably were cleaned and I'm sure it's, glad people are glad that it's over. So we got all the EDCs in our meeting with potentially tomorrow, because they have a bunch back to me about the programming of thermostat, so we get that all taken care of and should be good to go on a lot of that work. The roof was repaired. We haven't seen any other leaks from that, so grateful to the residents of Avon for supporting the article to get some of those things taken care of. Long time coming. And then lastly, I mentioned last meeting that the vet agent is retiring. I did meet with Dale, talked to him about a couple of different scenarios. One of the issues we have is that we are in agreement or district with technically Norfolk County. I am not confident they're going to be able to assist us in any capacity. We do have a thirty-day time period of when we need to send them a notification that we would like to dissolve the district. Franklin has already done that. Right now we are, it's just us and Norfolk County. I would like the board to look to rescind it and work with Dale on a temporary basis. Come up with a solution with the veterans services while we review options that were in the long run right now.
Can we go back into Norfolk County if we so?
If they come back and they have a, one, I don't know if they're gonna have the capacity or want to go ahead and join the board. I don't believe they will.
We got a hundred and thirty-four million dollars, just be able to do something.
But it's.
No, I don't, I don't believe it. From the information I got, I met with the county director a week ago, so. And as far as needs on the Norfolk County Advisory Board, it doesn't sound like they're gonna be looking at any regionalization of processes right now. Not that they couldn't, but this was an agreement that was put in between Avon and Franklin, who are, maybe, were on two ends of the county. I, I don't know how that came to be originally. It doesn't sound like.
I can give you a thirty-second.
In need of two towns that have one guy.
I can give you a thirty-second synopsis, if you'd like, at a different time.
Okay, a different time works. Do we have a, so we're talking about bringing on Dale as a contract, basically? What, dissolve the agreement, putting him on as a contractor?
We have to discuss it with him. He has to see about interest with his boss, because she's retiring as well. And so he's looking to maybe potentially assist just Avon and not Franklin, Franklin's a high-level person. He wants to see how that might work out. We might go to work with another town. I've been discussions with a couple of different shares there. Long-term, again, talking to other towns that might help us out. The hours that he works is probably gonna be very problematic to hire somebody that's just us doing this. It's a very technical thing with the benefits and the different programs, so it is complicated to get somebody who's never done it for three to four hours a week. So we are working with Dale to come to a resolution on some assistance. And we're gonna be attached to the state to make sure that we're in compliance with their requirements.
So you're looking for the board to?
Vote to rescind the, to notify Norfolk County the desire to rescind the MOU.
Any discussion from the board? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to rescind the Norfolk County MOU for the veterans agent.
Motion with a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
That's all I have.
Thank you. We now move into our appointments. We have a medical marijuana facility for informational meeting tonight. Applicants are here, and see, we have a couple friendly faces in the back. Don't know who the spokesperson is gonna be, but certainly we would ask you to come into the, I mean, to the seats in the back.
Does that mean the spokesperson generally, I think I see someone, I, I recognize this. Looks vague with.
Identify yourself.
Mr. Chairman, I could introduce parties for you.
Yep.
And good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the Honorable Board of Selectmen, Town Minister, Mr. Nino's Pharaoh, Town Council Lally, Special Town Council, et cetera. With me tonight, please, is representatives of INSA Inc., I-N-S-A Inc. And Mr. Peter Gallagher, the CEO is right there, just raised his hand. Another co-owner and the general counsel is Steve Riley, right here. So my, my immediate left is Mr. Brian Hammond, who's the Director of Security, right here. And last but not least, Mr. Dan Saber, who's the Senior Business Development Officer of the, of the corporation INSA Inc. So they have a desire to let you know what they have to do, so without any further ado, if you'd please permit, I'd like to have Steve Riley introduce a presentation. And they've done this in local communities, in the Commonwealth, they understand what selectmen and other town officials go through and all the other stakeholders, they're very sensitive to that. And that's why they've been successful, and I, I think you'll find it interesting, so if the chair would permit, I'd like to have Steve Riley take.
Please, Mr. Chairman. But I just wanted to check, I don't know if you want to have an introduction to Kate and let her, she's Special Constable Board. Do you want to do that before or after? Go ahead, Kate.
Sure.
Good to talk to them.
So I'm Kate Federoff. I'm in town. So thanks so much for having me this evening. For the firm, I was gonna say it differently, but I'm gonna say I handle most of the marijuana matters. It was gonna come out really funny the way I said out of my mind originally, but handle most of the marijuana matters. And so my hope here is to help guide you through this process because I know this is your first time on the staff. So I was approached by Greg and Joe to lend a little bit of expertise because what is before you and what ultimately will decide, probably not this evening, but at some future meeting, is whether or not you would like to enter into a host meeting agreement with INSA to establish the medical marijuana facility up at the industrial park. And the way I view it is really, it's a matter of getting comfortable with the applicants because it's really a partnership between the community and the entity. So that's the first step, and that's why they're here tonight to kind of present themselves to you and introduce their plan, their business plan, a description of how their business has worked in other communities and to see if it would be a nice fit for a.
Thank you.
Mr. Jim, I can just ask a quick question.
Okay.
Just to clarify, you said industrial park, you talked about Stockwell Park, not Bodwell Park.
Yes.
When people in this town think industrial park, they think of Bodwell. So I'm just trying to figure out.
Yes. Yes.
Any other?
All that.
Great, thank you guys. Thanks, everybody. We appreciate everyone taking the time to listen to this proposal and help us give an introduction to ourselves. We've been working with the town, with Greg and Joe and Kate, over the last few months to introduce what this project would be and kind of talk through some of the zoning and different aspects of what it would look like. But we really appreciate the time to kind of introduce ourselves and what this proposal would look like. We do have a slideshow. I'm not sure the best way to go through the slides, but we can probably go ahead to the third slide. Just as an introduction to who INSA is, by way of background, I'm an attorney in Massachusetts. My background is in municipal law, real estate licensing. I still represent a town in Massachusetts now. I was counsel for the city of Springfield and did all their licensing matters, so liquor licensing, entertainment licensing, all those kind of fun things that take place in the city of Springfield. So I certainly understand a lot of the concerns of the public around highly regulated industries. INSA was founded in Massachusetts in two thousand thirteen, certainly not from Avon, but we are more local than many of the other operators that are around in the area. We're a vertically integrated company, which means that we grow cannabis, process cannabis, and distribute in our own dispensaries. So we have an eighty-eight thousand square foot cultivation and production facility in East Hampton that's been operating for about five years or so. It's been a good success in that municipality. That facility also has a co-located adult use and medical use dispensary on the first floor, so we also dispense out of that facility. We haven't had issues there with some of the typical concerns, public safety, use in public, all those kind of things. We've really enjoyed an excellent relationship with the East Hampton Police Department. And I would encourage the town to reach out to officials in East Hampton to talk to them about what it's like to work with us and what their experience has been like with INSA operating. We think we've been a positive impact on that community, and that's the goal that we have at anywhere else that we go. As I mentioned, we started in Massachusetts. INSA was founded, Pete, our friend Pat, we all grew up in Springfield together. So we're traveling friends that wanted to get into business. We all had different backgrounds that made sense for this kind of industry. We've enjoyed some success beyond Massachusetts. We're actually licensed down in Pennsylvania as a cultivator and processor there, so we've got a fifty thousand square foot facility in Pennsylvania. And then we're also currently in Florida building a facility and also a dispensary, so we're operating in those three states. All those states are operating in good standing without issues with licenses or the municipalities, and we'd be more than happy to have officials, in fact, I'd encourage officials here to contact people in East Hampton or Springfield or Salem. Salem is where we have an adult use store. I was just there the last couple of days and actually met with her. Just to talk about the project, and she's been very supportive of it, making some upgrades to the store that's there. But we think it's been a very mutually beneficial relationship for both Springfield, Salem, and East Hampton. And I think that's one of the most illustrative ways we can say to you that we're a good operator for Avon, is for you to talk to the officials in the other places that we operate. So that they can say, yes, they're responsive, yes, they're responsible, and they've been a good steward for the community. And they've been a good uh steward for the community. Um, probably go to the next slide. Uh, so the proposal that we have here in Avon is located at twenty Stockwell Drive. Uh, that's a former Staples. Uh, it's a highly uh commercialized area with with highway access. Uh, there's onsite parking. Uh, these medical facilities don't tend to generate the type of volume that you would see at an adult use dispensary. So you probably saw a lot of the things where there'd be huge lines and lots of people waiting to get cannabis. North Hampton have those issues. Uh, Brookline has had those issues. That's not this model. Uh, that model can bring in over a thousand people a day. Uh, typically what we would expect for this facility is probably a hundred and fifty patients a day. That's about what we do in Springfield, which is a sizable community. Um, even if we exceeded that and went to about two hundred patients a day. It it's certainly a far lower volume than you would see at like a Dunkin' Donuts or a Starbucks or a lot of the other uh operate uh business operations. See in town. So we don't expect that there will be a meaningful impact created on the roads. We we will absolutely do a traffic study. Uh, as part of the special permit application, which is also a requirement to license this facility. Um, we've we've done a number of those studies, so we have some expectation of what that will probably show on on a road that has a kind of volume. Does. Uh, so we don't expect that there there would be anything impactful. Um, the hours that we're seeking to operate are seven AM to eleven PM. Uh, we operate. With success in those hours in other municipalities. It really allows us to kind of spread things out throughout the day. That we are able to stagger deliveries if we need to at different hours, which also helps with safety. We likely won't start at seven AM to eleven PM. I may in fact never even reach that point. It's really gonna depend on how busy the store is, but those hours all allow us to kind of spread, spread any kind of volume out. So. We really would expect even if food volumes were maybe we would see twenty people in the store. In the typical time, depending on whether it's an express pickup or shopping in the store, it's probably between like three to six minutes that someone would be in the store. Uh, so so not too 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 long. We can probably go to the next slide. Uh, host community. Um, as Kate mentioned, for us to operate Avon, we need a host community agreement. That's essentially a contract with municipality. That contract sets forth a number of operating terms like security, reporting, emergency contract, contacts, and traffic mitigation. It also includes the host community impact fee, which is a three percent fee on our gross sales. For a store like this, we would project probably about six million dollars a year gross sales. So. We would anticipate about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year going to Avon. Uh, we also uh provide through our employees, communities, for a volunteer hours for them to participate in community events. Uh, then we've got a history of doing charitable contributions, uh food drives, financial support, those kind of things, communities that we operate. And we do that in each community that we operate. Uh, the next slide is a timeline of of what we would expect to see. As we mentioned, we need a host community agreement, selectmen, that contract. Uh, a land use approval, which would be a special permit from the ZDA. We would anticipate that would be sometime at the end of September. Um, if we were able to receive the host community agreement, special permit. We would then need to go through the CCC licensing process. They they vet these establishments fairly significantly. Um, we're confident that we'd be able to get through that review. Uh, we've done it in other places without incident. So we think that. Sometime, hopefully around December or so, we we would have at least a preliminary CCC. That would allow us to start construction and hopefully open around July two thousand and twenty two would be an anticipated opening day. Um, probably go to the next slide. Uh, one of the critical things is what these stores look like. So this is probably the best example of. Of of a store that we have it in. So this is our most recent store. So this is in West Columbus Ave in Springfield. This is an adult use store for high volume. It'd be very different than the one at Stockwell Drive, but a lot of the look and quality of the store would be the same. Um, this is a store that that we really didn't spare expenses on. Uh, and we would like to carry over some of the things that have been successful in the store to to an Avon store. So. You know, thinking about the look of it, it's really critical. The signage, as you can see, it needs to be discreet and tasteful. And what we try to do is is produce. Uh, a welcoming environment where really anyone can feel comfortable walking in there. Um, this is not something that people would be able to see from the street. You have. A screening that will prevent people from being able to see inside. And then from outside, really what you're looking at is the logo on pretty minimal size. The next slide is a a proposal, what this layout would look like. So the the right side of that land. Uh, is the front of the house, essentially the sales. And then the left side is the back of the house, which would include the ball. Employee meeting rooms, offices, uh, training area. The next slide is uh showing compliance with zoning. Uh, for the site, uh, and you can see it there. It's it's at the end of the building, uh, kind of in the middle of the the bull's eye. And we're on the right side of that building, staple space. Um, I have Brian Hammond with me, uh, who's our head uh head of security. And I'd like for Brian to be able to talk a little bit about his background. Just about some of the security measures that we have in place here. And then also uh how we work with the police department, because we we seek to work closely with police departments. So in East Hampton, in Salem, and in Springfield, we we have excellent relationships with all those departments. Uh, we've worked with those departments to develop security plans that work. Uh, it doesn't work if we come in and say, here's what works for Avon. We make a proposal. We need to meet with the police department, get input from them and try to improve that plan based on what they think works well for Avon. That's been a successful formula in the other municipalities, and that's what we want to do here. Uh, but I'd like to have Brian talk about some of his background and corrections, and then also talk about some of the specific security features that we have.
My name's uh Brian Hammond, and I've been with the company for about five years now. It's a startup of it. Uh, I retired from the state. Five and a half years ago, I think I lasted about six months of retirement before I got the itch to go back to work. Um, I got three young kids, so couldn't stop working at forty seven. Wasn't possible. Um. I worked for the Department of Corrections for twenty two years, seventeen of them. I was a supervisor. I worked everywhere from the super max down to a level two gang units, death row. Uh, I wrote administrative directives, unit directives, accreditation, policy and procedures, uh developed forms. Um, I worked at central office doing background checks, hiring new officers. I worked at the academy doing training, uh, report writing, incident report writing. Uh, various things. I just about had my hand in everything you could possibly do with the state. Um, and what I did was when I came over to this company, I came over with the same concept, safety and security for the community, for the customers and for the staff. Security system, I can tell you right now, is it's unbelievable. Um, I overlap everything. We have motions, we have alarms, we have door access, we have glass breaks. Um, we've helped all the local police departments at every single facility with some of their outside investigations. From my anywhere from a road rage incident to vandalism. We had an accident on the main street over in Cottage. There was cars and they also contacted us for footage there. Cause we cover everything. Everything's covered. There's no blind spots. We cover around the building. And we do it in a tasteful manner so that they don't, you know, stick out. So it looks like it's, you know. Like a prison. It kind of just like blends into the building. Uh, we have the overlapping cameras inside. Uh, every single door is a card access door, and they're all hooked up to. Knock on wood. Never had any issues at all with anybody trying to break in. Never had any issues at all with CCC. They come in, they like everything that's being done. I'm a big person on forums. Um, I was gonna hand this around if you if you care to look at it. I form up everything from opening to closing to security procedures to audits. I audit all the equipment once a month, the panic, the video camera system, the door system, the fire extinguishers, all the security equipment. Onsite staff does daily opening and closing procedures. They also audit the people, they audit the equipment that's there. Um. The nice part about being on the ground floor with it is developing all these things from scratch. And the CCC, I can tell you, hands down, they love everything that was developed. From the transportation aspect. We also transport to our own facilities because we have the growth site in Stampedon Kitchen Lab and stuff like that. We monitor everything. We're actually one of the first transports to actually have cameras in the vehicle. I put four cameras in every single one. And I have a GPS monitoring system, monitoring the entire trip. Um, with Salem, the police department likes to get a call ahead of time. When we're making a delivery, and we do do that, we accommodate the police departments with whatever they. Very receptive to any ideas or suggestions that they would like to have done. I have a new site. It's a license plate reader. So it reads every single license plate that comes in. Um, we have, I call it the R two D two camera. The other ones where it scans the parking lot, it's preset, so it reads everybody's license plate. So if there's ever an issue, we have all the information, the local police department. Um, I can download footage from just about anywhere and send it to them, uh live photos and stuff like that. We had a road rage incident in East Hampton. And the police department came to us for footage, had photographs, and I was able to provide them with everything they needed. Um, it's actually a pleasure working with the police departments. My dad was a police officer for thirty two years. So I've been around law enforcement my entire life.
We we look at the operation as a supplement. Uh, as Brian mentioned, East Hamptons have issues totally unrelated to us. And they've had people drive by the facility. And and given the camera coverage that we have, we've been able to pick up information that's been helpful to them. Um, we like to think of it as enhancing security. You know, we'll take a a building that's vacant right now and really load it up with additional. Lighting, uh, camera features, uh motion detectors, brakes. Um, and it it becomes a pretty vibrant area. Um, not that we bring in a significant amount of people, but it's a fairly steady flow throughout the day. And then the employees as well. So we like to think that we can be a positive impact and and there are numbers that we've uh. Take a look at East Hampton for other communities that have gone in other states. Uh, that that show that we've had a positive impact and. You know, the I think kind of the takeaway of working with it. So I mean, you all have an obligation. You need to answer your constituents in Avon. And I think the best thing that we can say is that we we do this now, and we do it to success. There are benefits to these. This is for municipalities if they're run properly. And the the best thing I can say to you is that we we've run ours properly. We have a track record in Massachusetts. Um, you know, we're not coming in from outside the area, never having done that. So you know, that's certainly a risk of the poor that'll take, but. Um, I I would, I would ask you to reach out to some of these officials and some of those other offices and. You know, hopefully you can answer your constituents that, you know, there are positives for a business like this financially certainly for Avon. Um, but that by selecting a a responsible operator, you can eliminate a lot of the negatives, some of the concerns that. Municipalities have. Um, there are some additional slides at the end of this, but I'll leave them uh really just for more information for the board. They could cover additional community impacts. Um, and some other things, but I think we've kind of covered a lot of them verbally. So. Um, I'll I'll kind of conclude uh my presentation with that, but certainly we'd be interested to hear any questions that you all have. Um, next steps for us in this process would be to conduct a community outreach meeting, probably within the next uh three to four weeks, something along those lines. Uh, that's where we would invite the public in to address any concerns that they have. And we would go through a similar type of slide with them. Uh, there are certain things that we need to provide the public. Uh, that the CCC requires. That will be the next step. And then we hope to do that in front of the selectmen sometime at the end of August. Uh, where we could hopefully uh with the host community agreement and seek to hold on.
And just to add, we go above and beyond whatever the requirements are for the CCC. Uh, requirements for holding footage is ninety days. We have anywhere from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty minutes. Um, everything, what their standard is, I go call their.
Yeah, we don't, we don't argue. I mean, they want some other cameras to find lots. I mean, the the way we look at it is that the security. Is number one, and if they want additional security or they want, we we just. Same thing with the police department, as you said, I mean. Avon Police Department says, we want you to change ABC. We're gonna change ABC. They know what's best for Avon.
Directly behind you. Um, you mentioned employees and uh Avon would have uh first chance. How many employees would you be hiring?
So a store like this, we would probably figure about twenty. Probably a reasonable ballpark, um fifteen to twenty. Depends on volume. I mean, you know, if there's more volume, we have more employees.
Did that be full time, part time, combination?
Full time.
Full time person?
Yep, yep. And all the jobs come with with benefits, uh paid time off, uh 401K with a match, uh. Health insurance, dental, vision. I think for, what what are we starting at now here? Is it eighteen?
It's a eighteen dollars.
I think it's eighteen dollars an hour for the for physicians. That would be good. Those would be the starting jobs. So they're 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 good real jobs with with benefits and helpful as well.
Without um giving away any secrets or whatever, you mentioned that. One of the uh towns um appreciates a call when you get a delivery. What's uh, what's the delivery look like?
Oh, Brian.
We had, we started out with one initially. It was a Dodge. We went to a second vehicle, which is a Ford. And basically it can range anywhere from fifteen boxes of product to seventy boxes of product. Uh, it's an unmarked vehicle, so it doesn't stick out at all. Um. Everything's monitored, it's controlled. When it gets to the facility, everything's closed down and the product is brought into the vault area. Uh, takes very little time and then they inventory the product once it's inside the wall. The the monitoring takes place from the point that they leave East Hampton all the way up until they concluded the delivery. They have to be paperwork. We have a vehicle log that's included in a vehicle inspection form. If there's an accident, I drafted up a vehicle. Accident report form. It's very professional and a lot of companies have commented on how professional we are when we show up at other facilities. Policy of deliveries and stuff like that. The staff kind of like blends in. They don't like stick out um after wearing a uniform for twenty two years. I wanted more of the khaki blending in type of thing. Uh, the security is more customer service. Than actual. More hands on. It's definitely not hands on verbal communication, customer service. Say a special, since your product is flammable. But it is. Is there um additional precautions that you would uh take place with inside the building to protect your product?
Really high smoke depth.
We do utilize sprinkler systems. We have the whole station. We have smokes. Uh, we have fire extinguishers throughout the area. Um, I actually go above the fire extinguishers are like every seventy five feet, actually doing like every thirty five feet. Um, we go through training. People are onboarded, the security staff showing them how to use it. We also have the diagrams and all of those are audited every single month. Make sure that there's no issues that they're, you know, the hose is intact, the pin is there, it's holding jar. We also uh have the monitoring for the fire department, through the knock box on the outside. They'll have full access to the building. Let's just say what type of products. Um, I was looking at board health, so you would have any edibles there that we have to. Um, certainly um monitor with board health and so forth. That's compared to stuff that goes up in smoke or.
So we do have edibles, uh, but that's all under the CCC. They they take full jurisdiction over the edibles process. Um, these edibles are all controlled by CCC regulations, so nothing that appeals to kids. It's very. Boring type edibles. It, you know, it's a square. Uh, you know, it's not something that should appeal to kids. Like if you're looking at a gummy or a chocolate, I think chocolates. Uh, have a stamp on them to show they're cannabis. Uh, all the packaging is child. Child safety. Um, so, yeah, we do have that, but there shouldn't be any local oversight needed. Local oversight costs other than police fire, uh border health, uh really gives that jurisdiction over to CCC in terms of production. Of edibles or any any product that involves the kitchen.
And with the products delivered, you have vans are all temperature regulated. They all have cooling systems and so the walls, walls are temperature regulated.
And and just on the vans, I I wanted to clarify a little bit. They're very discreet and that's intentional. Um, on the road. The CCC doesn't want anyone to know what these are, so it's a white van and and that's it. Uh, it is reinforced with a cage inside. The van has cameras and then GPS tracking and monitoring back to East Hampton. Where security watches that van through the transport to make sure there are not issues.
And it's always two staff. Uh, no, they don't.
Yeah, not our. And then depending on what the the police department would want, we would coordinate. It depends, uh. Springfield doesn't require that. Salem does. They want to know when that van's on the.
They basically want fifteen minutes out when they're fifteen minutes out from the dispensary, so they can give it wherever in that area. Other additional questions?
Um, one other thing I noticed that, but just to comment, thank you for bringing that. There's a lot of.
Very welcome.
Very thoughtful, I'll say that. Um, you issue packing parking passes to each of your boys?
Yes.
That's good. I I saw that page. Your visitor's pass. Is it a perk, like a sticker that goes on the car?
Yeah, it goes on the rear. Yeah, so we know whose car is. If uh someone has these, because there's a delivery coming in, you know exactly whose car it is. Yeah, so we know whose car is if someone has these signs because there's a delivery coming in. You know exactly whose car it is.
You guys kept saying it's in the twenty Stockwell Drive, which is a staple. You're at the right side of the building, right?
Yeah, all the way to the right. There's, there's a like a metal mark feature that that's a love it.
You hear, yeah, working here, I'm dressed for me here staples and people are looking at the staples. It's like fifty thousand square feet. You guys, I mean, I know you guys do a lot of police department, you have some issues with fire department training. Whatever else.
Yeah, so you see
I'm in the white shirt is the fire chief.
You don't give out samples. No.
But East Hampton is a good example of that. So we've set up a primary officer in East Hampton into the facility. That's a big facility. It's about ninety thousand square feet. So we've offered to the department, any officer that wants to come in, we'll give them a full tour of the whole place. We want them to know what it looks like if they're up and so, you know, the we we really try to work closely with
And the fire department also they're familiar with the area. They know where the rises are.
And the size of the space is five thousand square feet. Yes, trying to clarify.
Yeah, no, I know. Just the thing is, is if anybody sees this or hears this and they hear the word staples, that maybe you're driving into a gigantic space.
Well, it's good. I won't stop using this stuff.
What exactly is a child resistant exit bag? I can understand the template. It's a child, it's an exit bag.
Uh, depends on, well, look.
You gotta use two hands to basically open the bag. So we have some drawstring bags that are usable. Uh, you gotta use two hands. So it's not easy for children to open up. So get your products inside. If you cinch it up tight, you know. We actually have a lot of customers that have a difficult time opening up the packaging.
Think about like a wine bag, read out the drawstring and and like a anything device that you need to move the the string up.
Thank you. I don't want to. I don't have anything other than it's a little, I don't want to say coincidental, but um, you know, we did a point of prevention coordinator tonight. So, no, I think that's one of the things that, you know, on top of border health, that's who's our position? Well, that's kind of why they're involved in it is that we work closely with the schools that I know superintendents on here as well. I see Chris there. So those are the things, you know, part of your communication that we'll be looking for because I'm sure in the results, you know, there's issues with whether or not you know, I utilization, what it says, how that impacts communities out here. So I'm sure in terms of community outreach meeting you have as well as uh, common period and we'll get input from, you know, all people behind you. In terms of next steps and what they have to see and we have small comments on.
Yeah, I I mean, I can answer any questions that you all have or kind of walk through. I guess with the host community agreement, we do have a draft and the idea is really to put in strongest protections for the town to ensure compliance with the presentation. Because we love our teeth. So essentially what it does is it number one for folks at home, because I notice it's an adult use ban community, it limits operations to medical marijuana. That's an important issue for the town of Avon. It has all kinds of requirements for issues regarding conversion for to Greg's point. So notification requirements, those exist in CCC regulations as well. Uh, but we wanted to show that right into the agreement so everyone at home feels comfortable with that who may not have the code Massachusetts regulations on file. Uh, it outlines the community impact payments, which is also another, you know, incentive for towns to enter into these agreements because the the sums of money that the town can receive in terms of revenue to offset costs to the town are pretty extensive. So one hundred eighty thousand dollars. It guarantees that the permits and other fees will be paid. Failure to do so would be breached. As the requirement for the traffic study, again, you don't want multiple traffic studies, but it builds that right into the agreement. So the special permit granting authority was comfortable demanding that type of study, given that you're coming off of twenty four going into the park and traffic could be a concern. It allows us to review their financials to the extent we need to, to determine that the reporting of the income is accurate. Such that the town is fully paid. It talks about the community support that these folks already spoke about, um, including the agreement to try to hire Avon residents in the facility, which is a benefit for economic development. Then, you know, then it's just your regular kind of contract boilerplate, but it talks about the facility site and improvements to decide to ensure that blends with the community. It's not this big. You know, neon flashing signs of get your marijuana here. It's really good. And it requires these folks to really carefully consider the concerns raised at the community outreach meeting by residents so that they can really take those concerns seriously and try to address them. So they are a part of the community and eventually will become part of the fabric. So I don't know if you have any additional questions, either on HCA or permit crossing, permit permitting process.
Morning. Um, Chief Bukra, any questions, comments at this time? Border Health.
I have two questions. One, what do you mean process?
Uh, we won't be doing any processing here. That that's only taking place in East Hampton, but essentially it's taking the plant and then refining it into a concentrate.
But that won't be done?
Yeah. This is just, just a dispensary. Uh, I I might have mentioned it in connection with the East Hampton site and just
And then just to add, but I understand why Avon, you already mentioned that, uh, you'll get the not as many estimates as recreational and you know, the medical only communities in this area, it's totally so much.
Yeah, so so we think that there is a real need for medical cannabis. I mean, it's not just the adult use side. And although there's not a significant difference between the end product, uh, the experience is very different. So what somebody who has cancer and wants to go buy a they don't want to see the same thing that somebody's looking to go recreationally purchase and come use. So the type of environment that we create in the battle dispensary is very different than an adult use dispensary. Uh, we think that the market for medical cannabis is going to remain strong in Massachusetts. There's no tax on this cannabis. So there's not a twenty percent tax that would be paid on the adult use. Um, here we're paying the community impact fee, but there's no sales tax on it. So we expect that uh, medical cannabis is going to remain viable. Uh, right now, our our medical stores are in East Hampton and Springfield. We've got the sale of this store in the eastern part of the state. Uh, so we've really had a desire to want to cite a medical store on the eastern part of the state. We like Stockwell Drive, given its commercial nature, the proximity to the highway, uh, and the and the fact that there aren't residents near us. That's one of the things that we want to try to um, so those are some of the reasons we like to start our games.
We did a market analysis and we didn't turn on that. And we were able to see where people come from, who are choosing.
But it is the same type of products for medical, recent recreation. I mean, they have the same levels of THC and it's not like different.
Yeah, for the most part, they're the same product. There's some variation in terms like really, it's the same product between the two. So the biggest difference comes down to the environment that we're selling it in and then the tax.
Chief Burke? Building permission.
I think earlier on in the discussion, they cited that the special permit was issued by the zoning board of appeals. In this case, in Avon, the special permit issued by the zoning board. Basically the same hearing process that um, and in the description of the building, they were preventing it was always front of the building. And it will remain always front of the building.
That wasn't a request, apparently. I do have one additional question.
Um, I I I might have missed it. And you guys are going to be a safety and security check. So you can have, um, since you guys do regular perimeter checks. Um, you guys can have a like a security guard out front. You guys have your own employees or is it just somebody like the store manager is going to be doing random checks? So how does that work?
They'll be outside secure.
Okay, so one of the employees, so
So it'll be an employee. It's an employee that's hired as a security associate.
Okay, well, that was my other question I was going to ask you too. It's, um, uh, you're, I I meant to, I thought of this app earlier. Um, you're, when you said you guys do your deliveries, the drivers that drive for you actually are your employees. You have control on the third party distributor company. Okay. And then the same thing was for the security is they're actually
Yeah, we have a security department. Brian, run, run to that.
Your, um, your estimates of the number of people per day, so that's about two hundred. Um, does that take into consideration like direct highway access number one? As well as proximity to both, to some of the larger cities in this area, i.e. Brockton, Quincy and Boston proper. Um, does that take into consideration that as well? The reason I ask is because that area gets very congested, especially during the holiday time. I mean, sometimes traffic can be backed up onto the hot onto twenty four from that area. So I just want, I'm just curious to know if that's, that two hundred is an estimate is based on on hard numbers that you have from other
Yeah.
Yeah, so we looked at basically what the stores currently operate, medical stores that currently operate. And then we extrapolate that based on things that you mentioned, population density, access to the facility. And we have about two hundred people is is reasonable. Uh, certainly there have been days in our stores in in Western Mass, they've done more than that. And I think, you know, they're staffed in one way that you wouldn't really notice that that, uh, so they're designed to handle wanting if necessary. Um, but we don't anticipate people having any problems.
Avon, Avon is somewhat unique where we have a small population, but on any given day, that population triples based on the number of people in town from the industrial parks, different places around here. As an example, the Walmart in Avon has a much bigger volume of sales than Brockton or Avenue because of where they are on right off the highway, closer to Brock, Boston proper. So I'm just curious to know if those
Do you carry a marketing team or something?
One of the things we noticed though with medical is that it's much more like a destination point. So it's not as if I'm driving by, I'm going to go buy some cannabis. So so as traffic increases, we don't see correlating increases for us. Uh, you need to have the medical card to go. People tend to have the place they go. Uh, and and certainly somebody from out of town that has never been there drives by and has a medical card, they could. Uh, but we don't see as much of that as as we would say like for adult use. Like if we were to have, uh, perfectly examples in Salem. Salem gets inundated with people in around Halloween, so obviously our sales numbers go way up, but that's an adult use store. So anybody that shows up can buy. It's different than than the medical.
Yes, sir.
They couldn't have gotten down when IKEA opened. They would have given the people something to do.
That's true.
Um, we're going to ask the audience, because we are in a hybrid meeting, see if there's any questions at all, comments or questions from anyone who's on remotely. Peter?
Peter entered the closet.
Any questions from anyone else over there? Peter, Chris or John?
I don't have any. Thank you.
I don't have any either.
No questions? Alright, that's good. So we appreciate you coming tonight. Uh, informational meeting. Um, I think the next thing they will schedule community meeting.
Community outreach.
Community outreach meeting. Um, in the meantime, we will, um, review the host agreement. Work with, um, special counsel so that, uh, we'll be able to give you some information, um, probably around the time or shortly thereafter, you have the, uh, host, uh, the community, uh, community meeting.
Sure. Yes, just, um, what we'll do is we'll put this stuff on the website too. In terms of the PowerPoint and the information, uh, as well as this video, if we can get it down properly from Zoom. Um, and we also talked about, um, public, any comments between now and the next meeting can go to info@avonhighfamily.co.
Are they going to, um, do some kind of, um, campaign to encourage? I don't know how you do your community outreach. Do you do some kind of social media campaign, something to encourage participation and comments so that they have some activity at the meeting?
Yeah, so there's a requirement to send notices to a butter. So we'll send those mail notices. Um, and then we have to send certain notices to the town, uh, and we would ask if the town could help so as on any kind of, uh, avenue that they have. And then there's also a newspaper publication.
So we'll be, we'll be
Well, we're going to talk a few about that.
Is that, is that similar to a public hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so it's public hearing, basically?
It 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 follows the same sort of procedure. Yeah.
Fourteen days, like fourteen days.
Yeah, exactly.
No, it's not that.
Exactly.
But we, as a board, do not run that meeting.
That's completely on them to be compliant with and they have to demonstrate compliance with the CCC.
What we try to do, if it's possible, or or to use municipal space, so we'll we'll reach out to the municipality, just because the public's comfortable coming to those spaces. So, uh, you know, we'll we'll reach out.
Our rental fees aren't that much.
We know we have there's, uh, you know, also ADA.
So if you reach out to, uh, uh, administrator, we'll facilitate something for you. Make sure and make it, we certainly want to make it easy for our residents to be, uh, participate too. Uh, and, um, just because we talk about Ivan Beach, would we open that meeting to the general public, do you think?
That would be a person. Yeah, the, yeah, the CCC permits that and we would seek to do it. We we think it's better to do it in person if you
We may see, see if it's something that we can order it or public access, especially if it's in this room. So those who can't attend can still see the meeting and
We will try to record it too, because it really produces a record of it for the CCC. In case there's questions about content and did we cover it or is it?
We'll record it too. We're not trying to share.
I hope the recording
Especially if it's in front of CCC. ABC maybe. Um, you, yeah, we can have any other questions or comments before we, um, finish up with the informational meeting.
I don't, uh, just want to say we really appreciate the willingness to listen. You know, some some communities don't even want to hear it. Uh, so we appreciate that. Well, we we appreciate the open mindedness and the communication and the time, you know, resources everybody's putting into this.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your comment.
Thank you very much, John.
We will, um, begin working on this. Um, we'll be waiting for, um, the invitation for the, uh, community meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Kerman, it's always a pleasure to see you.
No, no, go get back to your role.
Yeah.
Who who set up your kind of workshop meeting, the we don't accidentally, I mean, say something else. So you need executive session for the review and approval of executive session.
Yeah.
A compliance, more specifically. After third exception, twenty two F and G to discuss strategy with respect to what the bargaining asked me police by, in part, I appointed. All litigation as an open meeting may have a By, and by, 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 all litigation as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining for litigation position. Also to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Interlibrary director and interim council on aging director, chair, well, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, motion with a second, any discussions seen on the hall, those in favor signify by saying hi with a roll call, hold his light bin. Um, I can.
Hi.
So I can choose like, hi, she votes out, we will go in. And we will only come back to adjournment, which Greg doesn't want to say anymore.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Look at the minutes.
Yeah.
We do it every time. What are you talking about?